Recording, I'm opening this joint public hearing between the planning board, the Economic Development Council at 7:02 November 19th to consider three zoning initiatives. We'll consider them all in this one open meeting here. I think what I'll do is I'm going to briefly read the three initiatives that are on the table to be discussed tonight. And then I'm going to give the public an opportunity to speak. And then the boards will decide if they're going to deliberate in both this evening or if we're going to continue this. So. Let's see here. So the first initiative on the docket is to amend section 204.2 C-19, the Rural Residential RC of the zoning ordinance by removing the tier one limitation to the reads as follows. 19 marijuana cultivator pursuant to 207.17 amend section 204.2C, Rural Residential RC of the zoning ordinance by adding a new number 21 under subsection C, comma, uses allowed by special permit. That reads as follows, 200-4.2 Rural Residential RC, item C, uses permitted by special permit. And this is what we're adding in marijuana product manufacturing and marijuana retailer as accessory uses to use marijuana cultivator pursuant to 207.17 amend appendix A, table of uses of the zoning ordinance by adding the new category. That's the first initiative. Actually, does it make sense? Eric, would you like to just give a quick rundown of this from the planning department's perspective on the intent behind this and why it's come up?
I'd love to, yes. So an entity called Higher Yields is interested in locating in Greenfield for a marijuana cultivation facility. They have found a property, 1385 Berniston Road, Eastern Action Dome area. The owner is here and some folks from Higher Yields are here as well. Right now, accessory retail and product manufacturing is not allowed in the RC if you do a marijuana cultivation facility. So you want to add that in as an option to do accessory retail and accessory product manufacturing to their main facility, which will be a marijuana cultivation facility. And the primary thing they want to do is to eliminate the tier one limit, which is 5,000 square feet of canopy space for cultivation. For some, we put that in there initially when we established the marijuana ordinance. We put that in the RC district. We're concerned about. But that's a low amount. That's the first level, actually, a tier level for cultivation that's approved by the Control Commission. So we're proposing through the landowner. This is an application submitted by the landowner and Emily Seaman of Higher Yields to eliminate that so they can do a full cultivation facility at 1385 Berniston Road. And the Department of Planning Development doesn't see any issues with eliminating the tier one limit of 5,000 square feet. And we don't see any issues with allowing retail and product manufacturing as accessory uses to the main use of cultivation. Currently, in the GI District, retail sales are allowed already as an accessory use to any use in the GI District. So it's already been done in a different district, not relative to marijuana, but just retail in general.
Okay, thank you, Eric. I'm going to run down the next couple initiatives and then we'll give the public a chance to speak. The next one we're looking at is to amend the zoning ordinance by incorporating low impact LID techniques in the ordinance. Proposed amendments can be viewed at the city's website, greenfieldmass.gov. And Eric, do you want to give a quick background on this one as well?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. So we put the link on the public hearing notice to the city's website where you could actually view the amendments clearly. If we were to put all that wording in there, it would have been several thousand dollars for legal aid, so we put a link instead. So basically, this is a result of a grant that the Franklin Regional Council of Governments obtained many years ago. And I think it's four years, going on four years or more. It was a 319 grant they got from the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection. It was a stormwater grant. And part two of that grant was to partner with a municipality in the region to do amendments to land use regulations to incorporate low impact development. So we met many times through a committee and have. The result that you see now is our proposed amendments to incorporate LID throughout the zoning ordinance in many sections. Let me just back up and kind of tell everyone what low impact development is first. So if you don't have an understanding of what that is. It's a engineering and planning technique that uses natural features to manage stormwater and drain it off the site. Instead of concrete pipes, you would use the natural features of the landscape to accomplish the same goal to manage stormwater. So there's less infrastructure, there's less asphalt, less concrete in the world. It uses natural features like grass wheels, which we think is a good thing. So that's a basic definition of low impact development. So this grant, we worked with the committee and we made many amendments. The engineering division of the DPW reviewed all these, made some minor changes. They agree with everything other than the minor changes they made. The minor changes are incorporated into the proposed amendments before the city council and before the board. So that's just a general rundown. Each amendment that's being proposed, but that's just a general outline. We got to be where we are today.
Thank you. I'm going to mute everybody. So when you want to speak, you're going to have to unmute yourself, okay? Mute all. Okay. Except me, I'm not muted, am I? Okay, good. All right, thanks, Eric. Let's see. So Eric, that sort of completed your introduction to low impact development, I believe, correct?
That's correct, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, so moving on to the third initiative we're going to be considering tonight is to amend section 204.13 of the floodplain district F of the zoning ordinance. Proposed amendments can be viewed at the city's website, greenfieldmass.gov. And Eric, you just want to give the quick lowdown on this one?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. So back in April of 2020, the Federal Emergency Management Agency FEMA did what's called a community assistance visit. All communities that are part of the National Flood Insurance Program get a community assistance visit once every five years by FEMA. In the state of Massachusetts, they use the Department of Conservation and Recreation to do that. Staff from that office does the actual community assistance visit. We did it virtually because of COVID. And we got a good grade. Everything worked out great. We're following the program and doing everything. The purpose of a community assistance visit is to make sure that every community is not doing development within the 100-year floodplain, otherwise known as the special flood hazard area. So they review our building permits that are issued throughout the last five years. They review our regulations and they see how we're doing stuff in the floodplain or not doing stuff. So this community assistance visit resulted in some requirements for us to amend our floodplain district to be in compliance with the National Flood Insurance Program. Fortunately, they came out with a 2020 model bylaw ordinance for the Massachusetts communities to use. And that came out fairly recently, I think at the end of the summer. So we use that to amend our floodplain district. And all the amendments that are being proposed are required amendments. We have to put this in to be in compliance with the National Flood Insurance Program.
Okay, thank you. So I think hopefully that gives everybody, you know, a good understanding, you know, on both members of the boards and the public who are here, the basic background behind these initiatives. I think at this time, if anybody would like to, from the public, would like to speak, if you just sign up through the chat box, if you just type in your name and your address and if you're not from Greenfield, what town you are from. And I'll just, I'll call the names out in order as they appear in my chat box here.
And Chuck, can I jump in for a second?
Sure.
I need to open the public hearing from the EDC side.
Oh, sorry.
I will open our public hearing at 7:13 for the three aforementioned zoning amendments.
Okay.
I think that's all I need to do.
Okay, yep. Sorry about that.
Kathy tells me that's the way we do it.
No, I just barreled ahead. Okay, so first up, Emily Seelman, 1385 Classic Court, Charleston, South Carolina, from the Higher Yields Consulting. I think you have, did you unmute yourself, Emily?
I did.
Okay.
First of all, thank you all for your time tonight. I really appreciate it. I'm sorry, I'm not the Emily you thought I was.
That's okay.
I hope to fill her shoes tonight. I am from Higher Yields Consulting. John Valdez, he may have hopped off because he was having some audio issues, but he's hopping back in here soon. And we're working with Jeffrey Colson, who's the owner of the 1385 Berniston property. So we are the ones requesting the two ordinance changes. One being to request that retail and manufacturing as accessory uses to cultivation and removing the cap on the tier limits to the cultivation facility, the canopy space. I just want to, first of all, again, thank you for your time and consideration of this. Our purpose in working with Jeff is to take over his property. He's looking to, he's running, I think there's some feedback from someone.
Yeah, Emily, I'm going to mute everybody, so you're going to have to unmute yourself again.
Okay, here we go. So Jeffrey Colson is looking to, and Jeff, if you want to chime in, I'm not sure if you put your name in the chat, but Jeff has been really great working with you so far. He's looking to sell his property. He's run a successful sporting event location at his facility. It's been something that is, I think it's been a real pleasure for him to run that. But he's looking to, you know, retire and partake in the fruits of all of his labor for the last, you know, decades in this. And we linked up with him through John Valdez, who does some property management things and initiatives. And we saw an opportunity to build a fully vertical operation for cannabis in Massachusetts. And our background, just by way of example, we're in the cannabis industry across the country. And we've also done some work in other countries as well, but mainly in the United States. And I'm actually from the Midwest or East Coast Pennsylvania. So I kind of, my roots are up in that area. And I thought it was a really unique opportunity to work with Jeff and try to establish some roots there. We help people apply for licenses and build out their facilities and run their facilities all over the country. And so we thought it would be a good opportunity for us to do the same thing for ourselves because we know how to run a facility well and make sure it remains in compliance. I'm a civil litigator by trade, so compliance is like my thing. But when we met up with Jeff and we saw his property, we really saw a great opportunity to run a facility through economies of scale. So I'm not sure how familiar you are with the cannabis industry, but the challenge with operating in a very limited cultivation facility is that our margins severely decrease. And when you're talking about some tax issues like 280E, where we can't get the deductions that normal companies can, it is really, it's really important to try to maximize our output and produce everything in-house so that we can sell in-house, produce what we have grown. And so eliminating the tier would allow us to grow more, produce more, and then sell more, all from the same facilities under the same regulatory constructs that we put together rather than outsourcing it to another facility in another area. And it keeps the impact, the economic benefits, the tax benefits within the city of Greenfield. So that's our purpose in trying to maximize our output at the facility. So requesting that retail and manufacturing or accessory uses to cultivation is just kind of a natural byproduct of what we're looking to do here because as a vertically integrated operation, we want to be able to use all three license types at the same facility. It increases our ability to keep the facility secure without having to transport it to different areas in the state. It keeps, again, our ability to manage production better, manage our margins, and see the economic impacts remain in Greenfield. So we can hire from Greenfield. We can benefit the area a little bit better than we could if we had to locate across the state or locate in a different area. So that's kind of the outline of kind of what I wanted to just introduce as to why we're looking to increase this, these two limits. And, you know, we are happy to talk more about security issues or odor mitigation issues, anything like that, that tends to be a subject of focus on a local level, rightly so. We design really compliant security plans and ensure that everything is tight and everything is accounted for from the time a plant is rooted to the time that it is sold and every step in between. We understand everything we would need to do as far as fencing, everything like that. And what's unique about Jeff's property is that he's already got this dome facility set up that is perfect for a greenhouse facility because he's already got the foundation set. And so it would actually help us save in costs and build out. And we could set up our framework based on the cement pad of his dome, which was an indoor batting facility and golfing facility and things like that. So it's actually set up really nicely to be a tier that's much larger than a tier one. So if we can remove that cap, it actually helps us become far more productive and utilize the full space to its entirety rather than paying for the energy bills to fill the whole room, but only working in a small corner. And I'm not sure if anyone has any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
No, that's, I think we're just going to take, does anybody have any questions from like this point? Or I'm tempted to just sort of move through the public comment.
Okay.
At this point. And then maybe if we choose to deliberate, we could come back and ask you some questions then. Thank you very much for that. Okay, Nancy Hazard. I know you live on Garfield, I mean, on, I'm forgetting, Spring Terrace. I've forgotten my own street, but I don't know your house number. Nancy? You're, I think Nancy, you're muted.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I wanted to, I was, I wanted to support the work that you're doing with the low impact development. And I was involved in 2016 with Eric and Furcog working on this project. And I've learned a lot since we worked on this project. And so now it feels even more important to me than it did then. We, at that time, we were focusing on the stormwater management, as Eric mentioned. But I also want to say that it's a fabulous nature-based solutions for climate change issues and also habitat issues. I've just learned a huge amount about the value of trees in terms of supporting our insects, particularly moths and the butterflies that lay their eggs on trees. And those caterpillars that are on those trees become the food for birds and stuff. So I recently listened to a webinar about how caterpillars are really a keystone species. Who would know? So anyway, just wanted to say that and thank you for your work and for moving this forward.
Thank you, Nancy. Let's see, Jeff Colson?
Hi, I think I'm unmuted now.
Okay, good. Could you state your address, please?
I can. My, I am the owner of Indoor Action and working with Higher Yields. My address is 54 Wood Avenue in Gill. That's where I live. But my business is in Greenfield.
Okay.
And I just would like to say that I've been working with Higher Yields and it's, to me, at this point in time, it's a great opportunity. I appreciate the council taking a look at this. I think after being there for 25 years and considering everything that's going on at this point for a sports facility, this is an opportunity to really make a transition and keep the property viable and ongoing for years to come. As we all know, with the COVID, sports has taken an incredible nosedive. The guidelines of the state have essentially decreased my business by about 80, 85% at this point. So it's been a real boon to be working with Higher Yields. They're incredibly professional. I've enjoyed working with them and I'm hoping the city council will really take this and be able to vote for the zoning change. And I'm happy to answer any questions about the property.
Okay, great. Again, I think, I think we'll, if any of the members of the boards have questions, we'll circle, we'll have to take the opportunity to circle back once folks have spoken. So thank you, Jeff.
Okay.
Margot Jones?
Hello, hi. I, I just, I'm a member of the Greenfield Tree Committee and we're very excited about the LID amendment. We support it 100% because you've increased the required number of trees planted in parking lots. You widened the tree belt. You've said that you prefer native species and refer to the Greenfield list of trees that is planted. So generally, we're overwhelmingly enthusiastically in favor, as Nancy said, of this amendment. I think if Mary's on the meeting, she had a few little tweaks that we wondered if we could make a friendly amendment.
Yeah, sure, Margot. And just for the record, could you state your address, please?
Okay, Margot Jones, 28 Chestnut Hill in Greenfield.
Thank you. And then Mary Chick, when I saw that, I think I might have passed over you. I apologize if I did in the chat box.
I think you might.
Trial version.
Go, Mary.
Trial version.
Mary, are you muted? You have to unmute.
Okay, Mary?
Trial version.
I can speak to those friendly amendments. Do you want me to read them?
Trial version.
It sounds like Mary just has to trial version or something.
Yeah, I know, right.
Sorry.
Trial version.
Okay, well, to fill the gap so you don't spend any more time.
Trial version.
Mary, I probably have a trial version, but it seems to be working. Anyway, on page two, where you say where soil conditions allow, we would like to change that to where there are well-draining soils. Because we're afraid that some developers might say, oh, we have bad soil. We can't plant native trees. You can't plant the trees you want. And amend subsection D to include, quote, "to reduce the heat island effect." And then next, replace vegetation planted within stormwater management features with trees and shrubs planted within stormwater management features. The rationale is that otherwise, the planting of grass or other plants will count towards a minimum number of trees and shrubs. And we want to be sure that you get the minimum number. We've submitted this. It could be included. There's only a few more. It says that replace, it says currently, three-inch diameter caliper at 1.6 inches above the ground where you're measuring trees. And that's not the industry standard. The industry standard is a three-inch diameter caliper at 1.4 and a half feet above the ground. So that makes a big difference because of the flare of a tree. You could get a three-inch tree that's really a two-inch tree by industry standards. And then the last thing is, on page two, is add the words, quote, "10-foot landscape buffer strip, including shade trees." Change that to, quote, "10-foot landscape buffer strip, including shade trees from the large..." Approved Trees. That may sound technical, but we think in parking lots, it's very important to have tall trees that create decent amount of shade. Shall I keep going, Chuck?
Sure. I think this is helpful. And I don't know if other people on the, I don't know if folks from the EDC got a chance to see this memo or not, but I think.
Oh, I don't think we sent it to them, unless Eric did. I'm sorry. And I credit Mary C., the Chair of our Greenfield Tree Committee, totally with these little details that she saw. Again, on page three, the industry standard should be used instead of three-inch caliper at 1.6 inches above the ground. It should say three-inch diameter caliper at 1.4 and a half feet above ground. And replace. On the approved tree species list of chapter 400 of the Greenfield Code, "Large canopy trees are preferred for internal landscaping to provide maximum shading." Unquote. Change that to, quote, "All shade trees must be listed under Large Trees, 40 to 80-foot category of the approved tree species of list, list of chapter 400 of the Greenfield Code. Large canopy trees are required for internal landscaping to provide maximum shading." Period, unquote. And one last one, please, on that page. Please replace "preservation of existing trees is desirable and may be substituted for planting trees" with "preservation of existing trees must be prioritized and may be substituted for planted trees." Period. So those are our small recommendations for change.
Okay, thank you.
And they're totally, they are totally consistent with the intent of the bylaw change. Amendment change, whatever.
Okay. Thanks, Margot. Has anyone else signed in here? Looks like, it looks like everybody's spoken who signed up. Is that, am I missing anyone? Pop your hand up.
Ginny Disorder had a question.
Yeah, go ahead, Ginny.
Thank you, thank you very much. This was very well read and thought out. Could you, Margot, I just wondered, could you just read that first one again about the soil, please? If you could just read that one more, one more time, please, and thank you.
Margot, you're muted.
All right. Okay. It's the, it's our first item. Replace, quote, "where soil conditions allow," unquote, with, quote, "where there are well-draining soils," unquote.
Thank you.
And that, and that basically is, is sort of addressing that that's the more specific sort of determining factor as to whether or not soils are able to support trees is how well they, is how well they drain. Is that right?
Yes.
Okay. All right, thanks. All right, so that is, that is the end of public comment. I guess at this point, Counselor Dolan, you could, your board could deliberate or you could, you could choose to close your hearing. Is that right?
Yes, my plan was to adjourn at this point. We have another meeting on the 8th where we can deliberate over these things. And I would appreciate actually having a copy of those edits from either Mary or Margot in advance of that meeting. But I think that's, if the committee is amenable to that, I would recommend that we adjourn and do our deliberations. Let you do your. and do our deliberations. Let you do your deliberations in your board.
Okay. Did you have any follow-up questions for uh for for either Jeff or Emily after their presentations or?
I have a question for Emily. Emily, is she still here?
Yes.
Yes. So I I was interested, are you, you're planning to take down the bubble and replace it with greenhouses? Is that right?
Yes. So the way that the the dome sits, it's on a cement pad and it's irrigated underneath. So the dome wouldn't be safe enough to have a or and it wouldn't support energy-wise or lighting-wise. It wouldn't support the growth of cannabis.
It's not transparent.
What's that?
It doesn't let the light in, right?
We would have to supplement with a lot of lighting, yes. Um, and what's nice about a greenhouse is that we get to use uh natural sunlight and we can use light deprivation to grow rather than building a full indoor facility. It's just as safe, but it's a lot more energy efficient. It's environmentally friendly, I think, to a greater capacity than an indoor cultivation grow would be. So to answer your question directly, we would take the dome down, but keep the base foundation that's already built because it's strong.
And you'd put a parking, you'd put parking area in for the customers?
We would put, yes, we would put parking for the cultivation agents, so they have their own spot and the production agents and the or manufacturing agents and then for the retail facility.
I would urge you to use low impact uh development on the parking space.
We will, definitely. We might, we might consult Margot, um, because I liked some of the ideas she had, really.
It was really the committee's ideas, don't mind.
Okay.
We adjourn the uh our part of the meeting.
Oh, um, did you want to just, did you want to hang up? Do you want us uh wait here for us to ask and then?
I I have uh one, I have one one question to ask uh Emily.
Yeah.
Uh, are you planning any solar arrays uh around the development?
Um, well, so we can, with the greenhouse, um, and John, you might be better able to answer this question if that's okay, because he's actually our design and build, he's our general, he's a general contractor by trade and design and build. So that might be a better question for you to answer, John.
Oh, my name is John Valdez. Uh, at the time, we're not looking at any solar. Um, it is an option, though. Solar isn't the most efficient for a the facility like that. But it is, it is up and coming. It is, it is pushing that direction to be able to produce enough energy, though. Options that that are available for the for the design and build side of that. You know, like Emily was saying, the greenhouse is a great option, uh, energy-efficient option. Uh, we can still control the lighting with uh light shades uh to to make sure that we can optimize our plants and our growth. Um, but at this time, the solar is not in the in the process right now.
So so John, you're their contractor?
I'm actually one of the partial owner of higher yields and I also am a real estate broker and I am a general contractor.
Okay. All right. Could you just state your name, your name and address for the record, please?
It's John Valdez, thirteen thirteen five West Florida Place, Lakewood, Colorado. This is more of my primary residences.
Thank you. George, you had a question?
Thanks, thanks. Um, I just wanted to check if um before closing the public hearing, we want to see if any planning board members wanted to ask questions while the EDC is still here. I had a couple of questions. I didn't know if we wanted to do that first, just checking.
Uh, yeah, Counselor Dolan, are you happy um staying up, staying around till we vote till the question and answer period or?
Absolutely. We're here until we vote to adjourn. Um, if if folks find it valuable, absolutely.
Okay.
Thank you. I had um one question for Emily, uh, and I'm sorry if I missed this, but uh I know you were um part of the request was remove the cap on the square footage and I didn't catch what the square footage was of the proposed facility.
So the cap, um, as it stands right now, the tier one allows up to five thousand square feet of canopy space. And we're asking to remove the cap so that we can pursue a tier eleven, which allows up to one hundred thousand square feet. And it doesn't have to be one hundred thousand square feet this way. It doesn't have to be massively long. It can be a shortened facility and then operating through tiers so that we can leverage the foundation we have, not make this a huge, crazy, big complex, stay energy efficient within the boundaries of the greenhouse, and then operate with tiers that add up to one hundred thousand square feet.
So is that basically like 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 racking system so you can lift the plant material up and down?
Yeah, that's exactly it. Yep. And that allows us to um again, keep our costs low as we produce and manufacture the cannabis to sell flour or a tincture or a lotion and things like that.
Thank you. And I had a question, um, Margot, um, just on the um, the last or fifth arrow on the handout about page two. I couldn't locate exactly where that was. If you can direct me to the um section
Oh, boy. Uh, okay. Uh, that requires me having two um, two documents open. Okay, which one did you have a question on?
The last arrow on page two. I located everything else.
Ten-foot landscape buffer. Last thing on page two. I hope Mary's still on here. Uh.
Oh, I do see that now and that's um so I'm seeing that's not proposed new language if I'm reading that correctly, Eric.
Is that in the table, uh? The big table with all the different? I'm trying to find the language.
Uh, I'm looking at what's underlined on the draft. I think the underlined is the new language. So we're talking about uh section B one uh C, it looks like.
Yeah. Uh, let me try to get Mary to tell me, because I don't see it either.
Well, I I see where the language is, but it it doesn't look like, it looks like that's established wording language, not proposed language. That's all I'm.
Oh, you're right. Right. You're right.
You guys, I think, but what's happening here is that it's right now, it reads ten-foot landscape buffer strip, including shade trees. And the recommendation is to add from the large trees, forty to eighty category, list of approved trees.
Correct. Yep. That's right.
And that's something that it's not part of what had been recommended. Thank you. It helps to clear it up.
Just defines a shade tree more carefully.
Thank you.
Great. You're welcome.
Hey, um, anyone else with any with any more questions or or comments?
Can I jump in with one for Emily?
Sure, sure.
Um, just curious, we're all learning a lot about this exciting new industry in our state. Uh, and I was just curious, um, in terms of FTE employment, do you have a sense of how many jobs this facility is gonna gonna bring to town and um what are the general wages in this industry? I I just have no idea.
Um, it's actually one of the industries that provides the opportunity to provide way more in wages than minimum, which is what I really like about it. It provides meaningful opportunities as well for people um who may be in what's called a social equity area, which is a lower income or individuals who've been disproportionately impacted by prior cannabis laws. Um, and and so it provides a lot of opportunities in in that way. So um to answer your first question, if we can build the facility in the way that we want and handle more plants and things like that, then we can have probably around, and John, I could be mistaken, but ju- generally around thirty-five um employees. And and that's ranging from, because we, I mean, this is a high-risk industry, generally speaking, so you're talking everything from security personnel all the way down to your floor agents who are trimming the cultive, you know, trimming the cannabis plants and the ones who are packaging it and the ones who have to label it and then sell it. So there's so many different roles and it requires obviously a lot of training. And we understand that there's going to be a lot of people who would be applying that may not have previous experience, but we're willing to train them. We just want people who are willing to join in and and become part of the industry. So we're excited about that as an opportunity to to provide meaningful employment to community members. And again, like I also mentioned, providing an opportunity for individuals who may have been harmed by prior cannabis laws throughout the country. That's what I'm really big on in this industry and I I hope that we can also provide that here. And um as far as wages, what we generally like to do is look at this federal minimum wage, the state minimum wage, and go way above that. So generally speaking, for um hourly wages, and I can pull up some some charts. I was actually working on that with a client in Virginia right now. And generally speaking, it can start at, you know, if you're just training someone, maybe thirteen dollars an hour to twenty-five dollars an hour. Um, John, do you have an idea of what kind of wage ranges we would build here? And I can pull up my notes. I have this written out for what we would propose here in in Greenfield.
So thirty-five uh employees is probably going to be the lowest number that we'd have on a full full capacity. Um, what I'm looking at is probably closer to forty-five employees. That's including the bud tenders, the people working in the the extraction lab and also the trimmers and the gardeners. Uh, so you're probably around that forty, forty-five uh people. You are also looking at when we start the construction side of it, we use local, local people, uh, local contractors. We don't bring people in except for myself and and maybe two other, like a a a project manager and somebody that knows how to build one of these facilities. But we also use local, local people for the electricians, plumbers, uh, mechanical. We have, we we always want to be with the local people and bring the community together together like that. Um, you're probably looking at somebody that's working in our facility being fifteen and thirty-five dollars an hour. Is there hourly? Depending on their position. Uh, obviously, the 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 management will make more uh management can make upwards of a thousand a year, uh, depending on what what the facility is pulling in. And then we also have the marketing department and everything else that goes with that, that the company. So it's not just the touching plants. You have the whole back. We have, we have, you know, we have CPAs in place. We have a marketing and branding team that would be in your area and the packaging and all that good stuff, too.
Yeah, and what we found back in the beginning of the industry, it was consider that if you were just coming in as a low-wage bud tender or, you know, a dispensary floor agent, you would be making the standard minimum wage, whether that was seven dollars or nine dollars. And what we always push our clients to do and what we always do ourselves in other states is look at that and at least double it. So there was, uh, we were working with clients in a in another state on their project and we looked at the state standard. I think it was seven dollars and over the course of five years, the state was requiring a dollar increase. And what we did was we more than doubled it and then added that dollar every year on top of it. So we were able to bring in people who were eager to make more money so that they could do more good um as far as being in this industry and make an impact. And it allows us to vet high-quality employees, too. So we really do want to make an impact in that way as well.
And what we also like is that we teach people this trade. I mean, it's something that they can take to different different avenues. And it's not, I mean, it is a trade. It's like an electrician or plumber or something like that. You you learn the industry and you can go further and further. And it's not like you're just stuck at being a bud tender. You can move up the ladder and the pay scale also.
So would you also draw on local resources for some of your higher-paid jobs, like the marketing consultants and the accountants and and folks like that or?
We would work somebody that is qualified to do the cannabis, the two-eighty tax structure. Um, and we're starting to get more people that are in this profession. I mean, it is a new industry for you. So we have been working with people to teach them the directions to go. I mean, we've put together hundreds of facilities, so it's it, we know how to structure these and we've, you know, the direction to go to to make it profitable for them. Like you said, the accountants, the marketing departments, the uh the printers and people like that.
And what we also like to do is work with local uh career uh services offices or career placement companies, things like that, so that they kind of have their thumb on the pulse of what people are looking for and qualified individuals who are looking for positions like this. And and some of them even have a focus on diversity uh in in allowing us to see if there's a a pool of applicants we can pull that are diverse and we can add to that um to reflect the diversity of opinion, the creativity of thought, so that it's not all kind of one one type of person in our our facility. That's how we operate across the country. It's been very successful. And we would like to implement that here, starting from local residents who are interested in in working.
And we also do the community engagement. We we bring something to the community. Uh, we like to do events for the community and bring bring people together, educate people on it is a new industry. So we're trying to educate people on what the benefits of the plant is and the, you know, the medical benefits, the the benefits that it has on all aspects. So this community engagement is also.
I guess one other positive aspect is that, you know, that 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 pneumatic structure kind of has to be at the end of its lifespan. Um, I would think it's 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 pushing twenty, isn't it?
Is that a question for me?
Yeah, or or for, I guess, I guess for Jeffrey or or John or or Emily, I mean, the applicants, yes.
Okay, you're talking about the dome itself, correct?
Yeah.
No, that that dome is actually uh just four or five years old. I had to replace the old one.
You replaced it. You replaced it. Okay.
Yeah. Uh, one of the winter storms took the old one down and it didn't survive, so it's been replaced.
Okay.
But
There's also.
Limited lifespan as, yeah, as a dome.
Okay, any any other questions or or comments from from either the public or for the public?
Okay. I will, at this point, I think, close the public hearing for EDC. So that's at seven fifty P M. And if there are no other questions or comments, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Herschfeld wants to adjourn.
Okay, Herschfeld, can I consider that a second, Counselor Elmer?
Yes.
Okay. And uh we can take a voice vote. All those in favor?
Uh.
Hi. And um I'm planning to stay and listen to the planning board deliberation. Uh, if anybody else chooses to do so, just remember open meeting law. Um, if more than two of us are here, we can't talk to each other. So mum's the word. Um, but I'm curious what the what the rest of the conversation will be.
Okay, well, well, I thank you, counselors. And uh, yeah, you're all welcome to as many to stick around and 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 listen in. Um, so Eric, just as a as a point of order, would we, we, would we close the the public hearing before we deliberate? Or can we just deliberate within the parentheses of the public hearing?
You would close the public hearing first.
Okay. Does it, does, does anybody um, I'd entertain a motion to close the public hearing at this point, George?
Well, a point of clarification, because on the uh agenda, if I have the latest version, it doesn't reference that we'd have deliberation tonight.
For what it's worth, I was questioning the exact same thing.
All right, well, it's a, so so.
Yes, I I think you would still be able to actually deliberate, even though the agenda doesn't say deliberate.
Oh, does um, is there a preference on the board to deliberate this evening or 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 wait until um till our next meeting? I mean, the next meeting is a full agenda and then we're we're bringing up um subdivision LID um uh uh regulations uh in our second December meeting. So if we don't, if we don't move on this tonight, we're 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 gonna be putting it off either till the middle of January, I mean, till the middle of December, our second meeting, or um possibly further. Um, George?
Well, I I can just speak for myself, but I um, I prepare differently if for a public hearing as compared with a public hearing plus deliberation. So I had, I a public hearing as compared with a public hearing plus deliberation. So I had, I had prepared according to the agenda. Uh, forgive me if I should have been, uh, quicker on my feet, but that was my, um, understanding, is tonight was a public hearing and then the, uh, deliberation will be scheduled. I, I'm not sure about the, uh, I haven't seen the agenda for the third. Um, I don't know how long the deliberation on these would take, but I, I just like to always be fully prepared for deliberation, speaking for myself.
So Eric, on the third, we have the, uh, the, uh, the site plan review for, for three forty-seven Well Street, correct?
Correct, Mr. Chairman. And in addition to that, you have a ZBA recommendation for fourteen Hope Street Recorder Building.
Okay. Well, does it make sense to, uh, to close the public hearing at this point, and then, um, and then we can, we can deliberate our deliberations and then figure out, decide what we're going to do?
Sure. So I'll, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed, tensions? Okay, public hearing is closed. Thank you. So I'm going to stop recording. Is that right, Eric? I can stop recording?
I keep go, keep recording the whole meeting.
Okay. Okay. Um, all right, so, so getting back to the question of whether or not we, we, we deliberate and vote this evening, um, uh, do, what, what are, what are, what are the opinions of, of the other board members?
Well, did you say that we have some LID on the next meeting?
Well, no, on the, uh, on the, the second gen, the second meeting in December, we're going to be considering the subdivision LID guidelines.
Oh, right, there are two.
Right. And that's not really, that's not a, um, that's not something that has to get forwarded along to the city council. That's something that we will, you know, we will, we will, uh, uh, discuss and then vote on, and then it would become initiated into the ordinance at that point, because this is subdivision, and we're able to do that, subdivision by law.
Um, I'm kind of inclined to bang it out, because we're all here. And it's only been an hour. But, um, I also respect, um, George's statement about wanting to be more, more prepared. Um, it's always good to be fully prepared. Um, but I feel like we got some good information from our speakers and we'll probably deliberate. Curious what others think.
Mark, what's your opinion?
So I'm, I'm on the spectrum right between Jamie and George. I, it's not that I'm unwilling to do this, but frankly, I, if we are subject to open meeting law, I don't see how we can post a public hearing and then engage in deliberation. I, I, it, from my experience, those are two very different things, and I don't really want to put a bunch of time into violating open meeting law. So if Eric's saying it's legal, then I guess we could go ahead and do it. But frankly, I'm, I'm not fully convinced that it is.
Mr. Chairman? It's, yeah, it's in the gray area, to be honest. It's not a hundred percent either way.
All right, well, I mean, I didn't catch it. I just, I just assumed that, you know, these, these items were on the agenda, and then, and then we would, we would, um, uh, uh, deliberate and, and, and vote this evening if, if we, if we felt so inclined. But if it's, if it's a gray area and, and two of the board members are, are expressing, um, uh, just sort of concerns about it, I'm, I'm inclined to, to, um, to schedule the deliberation for, um, and I, I don't think this is necessarily is going to be a long, drawn-out deliberation. I would, I would, I would think about scheduling them for our next meeting, um, the, the, the site plan review and the, uh, and the ZBA recommendations. I'm getting a thumbs up from George.
Yep.
And Jamie. Mark's nodding his head. Okay. And Jim, I, you're on mute, but I'm assuming that you'll go along for, along with it. Okay. So we closed our public hearing, we've, we've decided to, we don't have, we don't have to vote on that, do we, Eric?
No.
No.
Okay. George?
And I'll, I'll just offer, thank you, um, for that, um, discussion. And, um, I, I certainly don't want to unnecessarily delay, but I do want to always do my due diligence, and, uh, that involves preparation for a deliberation process. So thank you.
I appreciate that. Thank you, George. Well, that's, that's all that's on the agenda then. So, um, I guess I would entertain a motion to adjourn unless anybody else has any further comments. Or we do have any, any, any board and staff reports or no action items?
Well, just clarification about, uh, it sounds like the other Emily was, uh, approved or went to the, the, uh, city council, so would need to get sworn in before serving or what?
Right.
Or when would take effect? Do you know, Eric?
Yeah, no, that's, that should be more up to speed on that. I know they appointed her, she has to be sworn in, and there's a thirty-five day period, but I don't know when that starts.
Okay. Okay.
Was that for a full voting member or alternate?
Yeah, she's going to be a full voting member.
Okay.
Yeah, you got leapfrogged, Mark.
After, uh, after our prior conversation, our last meeting, I had been in touch with Roxanne, and, uh, the horse was out of the barn, and every, it's, it's all fine. It's all good in the hood.
Nice.
All right. We root for you.
You're good, you're a good, you're, you're, you're a good sport, Mark. Thank you.
Honor to serve in any capacity, folks.
Thank you.
So if, if everybody's, um, is set on the coming agenda for the, for the, um, the third and the seventeenth, um,
And just, I will just offer under that on the third, we will start at six PM, and, uh, the seventeenth, we will again start at seven PM, and thank you for the board's accommodation of that.
Okay. And after that, will we be on the, uh, will be on the regular six o'clock schedule? Right, all right. Well, you're, 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 you're doing a lot for the community, George, thank you.
Thanks.
So just to confirm, on the third, it's at six, on the seventeenth, it's at seven?
Correct.
Right.
Thank you.
With that, I move to adjourn.
I will second.
Any further discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No posed, no nays? Okay, good, we're adjourned.